Mr. Busk, do we have any requests for continuances, withdrawals, or postponements?
None.
None. How about announcements and appeals?
Just one announcement regarding the meeting, the Planning Commission meeting of next week. The regular meeting has been canceled. However, there will be a special joint meeting with the Fire and Police Commission, and that will start at 4:00 PM in this room.
Okay. Yes.
I will be absent from that meeting. I'll be out of town next week.
Okay. Anything else of critical importance at the preliminaries? Okay. At this point in time, I'd like to open up the public portion of the meeting for members of the public to address the Commission on matters which are not on today's agenda. Seeing no green slips from Ms. Busk or folks coming forward, I will close that public portion of the meeting, and we will move on to our first agenda item, which is an environmental hearing on an application by the City of Santa Barbara for a bridge replacement project located in the 200 block of Chapala Street. Ms. Busk.
Michael Berman will give the staff presentation. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Bartlet, members of the Commission. This project is the Chapala Street Bridge Replacement over Mission Creek. The purpose of this hearing is to receive comments on the environmental document from the members of the public, the Planning Commission, and any agencies. A brief overview of where I'm going to go with this presentation. The bridge is going to be replaced because it's structurally I'm going to provide you with a brief summary of the project. The applicant is present and will be able to provide you with more details about the project and the environment around it. I'm going to give you a brief description of the environmental review process, summarize the primary issues that were addressed in the initial study, and we are going to solicit comments from the PC, the public, and any agencies. Let's start off by telling you where this project is. This is, the project site is in this location here to orient you a little bit. This is Highway 101, Southern Pacific Railroad going this way. This is Railroad Depot. This is Railroad Depot Park. State Street over here, the ocean and beach over here. The project would replace an existing bridge over Mission Creek that is seismically and structurally deficient. The new bridge deck would be approximately 60% of the area of the old bridge. The construction would involve inserting piles behind the south abutment, constructing a wall on top of that, and that would support the south part of the new bridge. And on the north side, we would remove the existing sandstone wall, insert new piles, construct an abutment above it, put a sandstone veneer on that abutment, and then place the new deck and railings on the abutments. As I mentioned in the staff report, there is a discrepancy between the graphic in the initial study that depicts the project and the verbal project description. The discrepancy involves this triangular area depicted in red in this diagram, and the issue is, is that the new sandstone veneered abutment wall on the north bank will be at the same location as the existing abutment wall, which is this line here, rather than what is verbally described in the initial study as being moved back to this wall to remove a slight jog that occurs in this location. The environmental review process, in order to conduct the environmental review, we establish a stable project description. We then analyze the proposed project by consulting with experts, agencies, preparation of technical studies, and we draft an initial study if we suspect that project impacts have the potential to be significant. We determine the impact levels, and in this case, since it's an initial study, and we determined that impacts would be potentially significant but mitigable, we prepared a negative declaration. We then noticed that there would be a public hearing, sent out a public notice, and the public comment period begins July the 27th and proceeds to August the 26th, which will be next Friday. The Planning Commission hearing is today, August 18th, and once we have received the comments, the comment period is closed. We will respond to comments, and then we will return to the Planning Commission for adoption of the final mitigated negative declaration and review of the actual project itself and consideration of the coastal development permit. The initial study found significant, potentially significant mitigable impacts in the areas of air quality related to asbestos that could be but wasn't actually found in the bearings that support the existing bridge deck. The biology study found similar impacts related to the Taub Wadagobi that resides in the lagoon below the sill and steelhead which migrate through the creek bed underneath the bridge. In the area of cultural resources because of the adjacent Railroad Depot and Railroad Depot Park and locally significant historical resources associated with the bridge itself. Geophysical impacts related to seismic subsidence, hazards related to lead which was found at low levels in the paint, and water discharges related to water quality and also which is related to biology. Less insignificant impacts or impacts that were beneficial were found in the areas of aesthetics, noise, population and housing, transportation and circulation, public services, recreation and transportation. Again, the purpose of this meeting is to solicit comments on the advocacy of the environmental documents that have been submitted and to solicit comments from both the public and the Planning Commission. After we have received comments, we will respond to comments and provide a final mitigated negative declaration which responds to those comments and makes any changes necessary to be accurate, and we would return to the Planning Commission with a final mitigated negative declaration for adoption and project for coastal development permit approval. Any comments that anybody would like to send into the city can be submitted to me, Michael Berman, at Planning Division, City of Santa Barbara, P.O., Box 1990, Santa Barbara, California 93102, or to the email address mberman@santabarbaraca.gov. That concludes my brief presentation. The applicant is here and has a presentation as well, and if you give me one moment, I will bring their presentation up. One moment, please.
Could you state your name for the record?
Sure. My name is Jeff Palmer. I'm an engineer with the Public Works Department. Chair Justice and Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to be here today. I'll give you a brief presentation to supplement what Michael has already shown you. We are proposing to replace the Chapala Yananali Bridge over the Lower Mission Creek. You already saw the location map, got a star right on the Wanted to highlight a couple of the surrounding properties. The area has a variety of single-family and multifamily uses, some commercial. The tourist hostel is shown there as well as the depot. Wanted to just highlight a few of the reports and studies that we did during the environmental review process. We did some engineering analysis, a number of environmental and biological reviews. We did a lead and asbestos sampling for the bridge, and we also took a look at all of the Lower Mission Creek EIR studies that were prepared for the overall project of Lower Mission In terms of a bridge review process, the city undertook the capital improvement process review back in 2007. The 2007 inspection report from Caltrans shows that the bridge is seismically deficient and is listed with a 15-ton weight limit. That's below a normal maximum legal loaded vehicle load, which is typically 24 tons or 20, depending upon the construction methodologies of the bridge. So over between 2007 and 2010, we undertook a number of alternative reviews for the bridge, some configurations. We spent quite a bit of time talking with Caltrans about FHWA funding requirements and reports that would be required. And before that process moved into the DART review, we looked at a number of alignment studies for the bridge. In 2009, we hired an engineering consultant to help us with that process, and over the course of the last couple of years, we've looked at a number of alternatives and how to refine those to meet the goals. Well, I'll talk about some goals that we developed for the project here in a little bit. In the DART review, we met with all the departments a number of times. There were some starts and stops. We finally achieved a, being deemed complete by all the departments in the city, and moving forward to the environmental review process which is before you today. We also have been to HLC for two concept reviews and to present the historic report to them. We have a couple of other items that we will go back to HLC on, specifically some railing details and a couple of trees that will need to be relocated or removed as part of the project, but those will come back to you as well for your review. The end result of all of the environmental studies kind of is shown on this exhibit. We have Lower Mission Creek, that, the bypass channel for Lower Mission Creek comes under the railroad tracks just to the east of the project. That is an underground box culvert, shown in blue. It is a separate project. We're adjacent to it, but we're not part of it. But we are working very closely with the County of Ventura and the Army Corps of Engineers to make sure that the designs for both the bridge and the box culvert can be achieved in as small a possible area. We also have all of the improvements related to the train depot, the park. The Mission Creek diversion is a historic structure in terms of the sandstone walls. Our initial studies for the Chapala Street Bridge, as you know, the bridge has what we call pony trusses. They're metal truss structural elements that hold the bridge up. There was some initial thought that those pony trusses would be a historic element and needed to be preserved. We took that to HLC for their review, and it turns out that those trusses have been modified significantly since their initial installation. Starting back in the 1970s, additional steel was welded to the trusses, bars, brackets, and so today it doesn't meet the requirements for a historical structure, according to HLC. We also have to deal with all of the Caltrans requirements for receiving federal funding through Caltrans. So there's a number of documents and review processes that we had to go through for the Highway Bridge Program. We've highlighted two buildings. 120, that's South Chapala, is immediately to the south of the bridge structure, and the building, the house itself, has some historic elements to it in terms of its construction. We're not going to touch the house. We have no impacts to the house. There is a stucco wall between the house and the bridge that is not historic, that we would do some modifications to. We will have to work with the owner, get a right of entry to do the work, and then replace it in kind exactly post-construction of the bridge. The tourist hostel is also shown there. It is adjacent to the site. We don't have any impacts to the site right now based on the bridge. However, as we talk about the overall picture of the area, the Lower Mission Creek project shown in blue will have some property impacts to that, and so we're working very closely to try and coordinate and minimize those. I've put this slide in the presentation just for bringing everybody up to date. The star is shown where the bridge is located. We are part of the overall conveyance system for storm drain flows in the area. We are not part of the actual Lower Mission Creek Flood Control Project that was, the EIR was approved in 2000 and 2006. And so we have to be very mindful of all of the documents that go with the Lower Mission Creek and all the restrictions and mitigation efforts. However, we are not part of that overall project. So here are some project goals that came out of all of the dialogue with all of the departments that came from our work back starting in 2007. First of all, public safety and structural reliability. We want to make sure that the infrastructure system of the city is safe and reliable, and with this bridge and its structural deficient designation, we wanted to make sure that we could meet the FHWA funding requirements as well as provide a structurally safe bridge. We also looked at water quality enhancement, being a bridge over the creek and adjacent to, just upstream of the lagoon. We wanted to increase the daylighting of the creek and reduce the bridge, make the new bridge as small as possible. We also wanted to reduce impermeable surface area and make sure that the best available technology for water quality improvements were made. From a circulation standpoint, we wanted to just maintain the existing circulation patterns. Right now, the bridge functions as providing two-way traffic through the area, and we wanted to at least meet those requirements. We wanted, of course, to coordinate with the Lower Mission Creek Flood Control Project, and then as part of the project, underground as appropriately as many of the overhead utilities as we can as part of this project. And we'll have some pictures that will show that here in a So this is a picture looking from about the sidewalk in front of the hostel, looking to the northwest. You see the northern extension of Chapala Street has been gated off. Of course, it's been gated off for many years as a result of the railroad tracks and the 101 freeway improvements. It's a closer view of the pony truss you can see that's on the west side of the bridge. This is from about the fence location, looking south toward the ocean. You can see the pony truss on the south side of the creek as well as the overhead utilities. We would be looking to underground all of the utilities north of this location, down to and including that first pole with the streetlights. So we would end up with a streetlight at that location, and all of the wiring would be underground. This is looking back east on Yananali and the parking in front of the depot park, as well as the hostel on the right-hand side. This is on Yananali, looking to the west. There is a commercial building and multifamily housing units immediately to the west. Our project does not include any impacts or any work within that property. So as we look back through the bridge alternatives, we really came up with sort of four basic shapes, and then these were refined as we worked through the design process. Of course, alternative one was a full-deck replacement. There was some thought at the beginning of the process that we would have to replace the full deck based on the pony trusses potentially being historic. Once we met with HLC and could remove that as a requirement, we were able to move into these other three alternatives and increase the daylighting to the creek. So alternative two on the right is a, really a two-lane bridge with sidewalks on both sides. Alternative three is a one-lane variation with a offset sidewalk. We were thinking that maybe we would use the pony trusses as the edges of that sidewalk if the reuse was required. That alternative was eliminated since we didn't have to reuse the pony trusses. And then, of course, alternative four, which is a variation with some different sidewalk configurations. This is the proposed plan that is before you. It is a two-lane bridge with two sidewalks, providing for, you know, existing circulation as it exists today. We have minimized the width as much as possible, and as Michael said, there's about a 40% reduction in the amount of the bridge that covers the existing creek. We would be installing, of course, ADA ramps at the intersection to improve the pedestrian flow and meet those requirements. I wanted to highlight one item here on this slide. Just downstream of Mission Creek, there is a line. I can put the mouse on that. That is the end of the concrete channel. Above that line, all the way underneath the railroad and underneath the 101, that is a concrete line channel. Below that line is the natural bottom channel and the limits of the lagoon. So all of our work stays out of the lagoon. We don't have any impacts to the lagoon and all of the various habitat that is below that line. This slide is exactly the same as the previous with shown the traffic patterns or the turning movements for two-way vehicle traffic. We have highlighted here, just for presentation purposes, green is a city bus and purple is a standard automobile that we can accommodate with this bridge, two-way traffic, without having any conflicts on the bridge. And you can see from where the limits of the colored lines are, we've really narrowed the bridge down to the minimum necessary to just provide a safe flow of traffic and keep the bridge as narrow as possible. That concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions from the Commission.
Okay. Let's start with Ms. Jacobs.
I just have one question. It's sort of a general staff question. Have we gotten any public comment or letters from the public about this project?
No.
Or have we had a neighborhood outreach?
This hearing was noticed, but no specific neighborhood outreach that planning is involved in, maybe Public Works?
I did meet with the owners of the 120 Chapala Street. They're the homeowners that are the closest and immediately adjacent to the project.
The house that we saw?
Correct, the house that we saw.
That's the one I'm thinking of, too.
Yes. We had a very pleasant conversation, the gentleman and I. He had received several of the letters as part of the mailings that had gone out. He and I talked briefly about, you know, what the schedule would be going forward, and I committed to him that we would keep him advised of anything that goes on, and he was supportive of the project and really just wanted to know when the construction was because he travels a lot, and if he could plan his travel accordingly, he would.
Okay. Thanks.
Chair Bartlet, I omitted to say that the HLC hearing was also, sorry, Chair, I've just promoted you, sorry. Justice, Chair Justice.
That's twice.
My message is gone.
I think so.
The HLC hearing on this item was also publicly noticed.
Let's start at the opposite end here with Ms. Schwartz and move down to.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of questions at this time regarding cultural or historic resources. On page 18 of the initial study, the first, maybe it's for my own education, the pony trusses. I thought that we heard at our site visit on Tuesday, perhaps from Mr. Berman, that while initially there was an assumption that there were only a few pony trusses still in existence, Mr. Berman, maybe you can correct me here on this, but then in fact, it turned out after further study, there are hundreds of pony trusses in California. So it was based on that that they were not deemed historically significant as a resource for this project, as opposed to numerous modifications made to the trusses as you just described in the presentation.
Chair Justice, members of the Commission, both are actually correct. The original study by Post Hazelteen looked at the whole Lower Mission Creek Flood Control Project, quoted two documents that they had found that said there were only four extant in the, of these pony truss bridges in the whole of California. Subsequently, applied earthworks obtained a study that was recently done by Caltrans, and that indicated there were a couple hundred of these bridges in California. And secondly, it was acknowledged that those bridge railings had been substantially modified, irreversibly so.
Okay. My second question, also on historic resources, on the next page, page 19 pertains to the Potter Hotel pedestrian bridge and the posts that we saw with the finial tops, and I'm not quite understanding what the plan will be for those. I see there's been extensive graffiti applied and then removed, and so they're, you know, they're in a state of needing at least some significant care for restoration, and maybe you could comment on that for me.
The Potter Hotel railing and some of the pipe railing that you see in the picture, the historic elements of the railing are the two-rail pipe. That is the railing that was installed and matches the historic from the depot. At some point in the past, the wire mesh that was put on the Potter Bridge appears to have been done based on safety requirements in that any bridge today, you have to have a maximum of a four-inch opening based on somebody being able to fall through or crawl through an opening. So the Potter Hotel Bridge railings, the pipe is sort of the historic element, and the mesh has been added to it. The thought was trying to keep as much of the original as possible but make the bridge safe. One of the things that we will do during the final design process is look at, you know, are there some modifications or some repairs that can be made to it to keep it in its historic condition as well as, you know, cleaning it up and fixing any, you know, holes or gaps that may occur. So we will be doing some work on it purely to sort of clean it up, but we're also not allowed to change any of the design as it stands today.
How about those low steps that I, I guess I would describe them as, on the west side of the bridge going into a parking lot behind a rental complex? Are those part of the historic structure?
It's hard to tell from the documents. There's a couple of steps that go up and over the top of the sandstone wall at the west end of the bridge. It's hard to tell when those were added or what those pertain to. Again, at this point, we're not proposing to make any changes to those as part of this project.
And any graffiti abatement thoughts? Because I, we noticed graffiti on quite a bit of that area, including the historic portions.
I think it's standard for us in this sort of environment that as part of the construction, we will sort of secure the whole area as a construction zone, and it would be part of the construction phase to open it back up to the public, to clean it up and make sure that everything is safe and is clean. So when it's opened, we would have those graffiti or anything, you know, trash and debris and, you know, cleaned up and removed.
Okay. That's it for now, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Would you please, you said that you were mindful of the Mission Creek EIRs. Could you elaborate on that a little bit? Because we, we have, some of us have been part of all that process, and we're so aware of the amount that has gone on. But if you don't mind, mindful has something for one person and entirely something else for another. So I'd like a better statement about that, if you don't mind.
The Lower Mission Creek project, from an overall design perspective, is, you know, a flood control project from north of Haley and De La Vina down to Cabrillo and the ocean. The existing channel, many areas of the existing channel, can only pass about a six-year storm. And over the storms in the past, there was, the project developed to pass a 20-year storm. So a 20-year storm on Lower Mission Creek is 3,400 cubic feet a second. The existing channel, the sandstone channel that the Chapala Bridge covers, can only pass about a third of that. So in the area from just south of the project to up north of the 101, there was conceived this bypass box, and it's a underground box that starts north of the 101, and it's, the bottom of it will be a little bit higher than the existing creek, so that in low flows and in many years without storms that are large enough, the water will all stay in the channel and stay in the sandstone channel going under the Chapala Bridge. In more significant events, then the water would rise and go through that box. So the box may be used, you know, every year or two, or maybe not for several years, depending upon the storm frequency. This bridge isn't part of the Lower Mission Creek because when it was envisioned, there were no improvements sort of envisioned for the bridge itself. It's only subsequent to the approval of the Lower Mission Creek EIR that the seismic investigation and studies of the Chapala Bridge came to light. So that's why in 2007, we began this process to look at the replacement of this bridge as a, as a seismically deficient bridge. So when I say mindful, we have looked at all of the EIR and hydrology studies so that our new bridge, as it's proposed, doesn't in any way impede any of the storm flows that are, that were proposed, or takes into account any mitigation measures that were developed for part of the Lower Mission Creek project as it relates to developed for part of the Lower Mission Creek project as it relates to the lagoon. So any protection of the gobies, passage of the steelhead through our construction zone, any requirements to make sure that debris and construction impacts don't impact the lagoon. Those are the kinds of studies that we made sure we are including as part of this bridge project.
Thank you very much. That's a great explanation.
Chair Justice, members of the Commission, I just wanted to add that the north abutment wall for the new bridge is also being made as narrow as possible to facilitate the construction of the box culvert as far to the south as possible so that any impacts on the youth hostel would be minimized.
Mr. Bartlett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a series of questions, but I think I'll follow up on the comment that Michael Berman just made. I had a question you presented in the staff report, the realignment of the north side abutment being closer to the creek than, I think, what the staff report had. Was the reason so that that could move as far away from the park and the youth hostel as possible?
Chair Bartlett, we did go back and forth moving the wall to the original location or back to eliminate the jog, as I showed in that red triangle early in my presentation. However, it was eventually decided that they would replace the wall in the existing location. I don't think it makes much difference to the location of the bypass culvert, because if you looked at that diagram of the new wall versus the old, by the time it gets to the bridge, it's very narrow. It's three feet at the maximum, and it narrows down to nothing at the other end.
Could you put that diagram back up on the screen?
Let me try to point some stuff out.
I guess my question is, the current jog on that wall is hidden because it's under the bridge, the existing bridge. When you remove the bridge, now you're going to have an apparent jog in that beautiful stone wall that's exposed. You know, how are you handling that aesthetically?
Chair Justice, members of the Commission, the aesthetics are to replace the sandstone wall to look very much like it does now. They're going to have, put a veneer face and clean the graffiti off the wall. So that jog will continue to be there.
Okay. And then I have another question. What's the current traffic count going over this bridge?
We collected traffic counts on Yananali and Chapala. We didn't take one exactly on the center of the bridge, but the total vehicle traffic on a 24-hour period ranges from about 120 to about 170 vehicles per day in this neighborhood.
And how does that then qualify as a highway bridge for highway funding? I'm just trying to connect the dots here.
The, a bridge over 10 feet long classifies as a bridge under the Caltrans definition of a bridge. And so the city actually has many bridges in town. I don't remember the exact number, but I think there's almost 100 bridges that are on the city and Caltrans lists for bridges that meet the definition of a bridge under Caltrans. The highway bridge program that we are achieving funding for is a federal highways grant to the state, then to the city, to go ahead and make repairs to that infrastructure element within the city. So currently, we have a number of bridges that we've worked on. This is one that's currently worked on. We have a number more that we're applying for. But once it meets that two-lane or the 10-foot-long bridge, it meets that classification if it's a roadway.
Okay. Thank you. Also, one of the goals of this project was to minimize the amount of bridge deck area so that you could have surveillance and make it a more secure area. How do you propose to secure and monitor the infrequently-used bow bypass culvert that may only have water once or twice a year? And it's big and long.
The bypass culvert, of course, as I stated, may not be used every year or for a number of years. And the design team working on that is looking at a series of floodgates that would close during dry periods and would, would open up during wet periods. They're still in their design, but it would be some kind of flap gate kind of structure.
Okay. And one last question, then. The proposed curb extension on this corner, in light of last Tuesday's city council meeting, is that really part of the scope of this project, given that it was approved with the condominium project that we approved a year or so ago?
Chair Justice, Commissioner Bartlett, it's my, our understanding that, yes, it was a condition of approval for 203 Chapala. It's a commercial building right now, and then it was proposal for seven condominiums. It was a condition of approval for that project. And because it was a condition, when we were doing our conceptual designs, Transportation shared that with us, that that was the condition. But we would have to go back to Transportation to see if that, in light of all the curb issues, that we may need to revisit that. The bridge design can accommodate either corner.
So is it or isn't it part of this scope? I thought it was part of the scope of the other project.
It's not, it's part of the scope of the other project. That's correct.
Okay, great. Thank you. It looks like it's part of this because it's so dark on your drawing. So, thank you. That's it.
Are there questions from, Ms. Lodge?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Palmer, the bridge is deemed structurally deficient. Is there any, is it something that the city needs to get done as quickly as possible? Or does the post, I assume it's been posted for the lower weight? And is that adequate to keep it going until, I assume this is going to take quite a while to get replaced?
The bridge is posted for the 15-ton weight limit. Caltrans and the city still cooperate on semi-annual bridge inspection, so we continually monitor all of the bridges. And this one, because it's posted as a lower-than-full-weight-limit bridge, will get its inspection every two years. And of course, any changes that would occur, if there are additional structural inspection recommendations, we would go ahead and follow those and make the appropriate signing, posting, restrictions, whatever would be appropriate at that time.
Okay, thank you. And approximately, how long will it take, including all the environmental review process and so on, and finalization of plans and construction, until the bridge is actually replaced? What's your estimate?
The construction estimate at this point is about a 14-month construction time period. And we believe that we would begin construction about a year from now. The actual time of construction start would be phased to meet any restrictions related to biology, or, we can't go in and do any work in the channel during the wet season, so we'd have to kind of phase that accordingly. But it's anticipated it's about another year for all of the final design and permitting and funding requirements through Caltrans, and then about a 14-month construction window.
Okay. Thank you. And then you mentioned air quality issues and asbestos. Could you expand on that?
We did an asbestos and a lead study of the site as part of our preliminary engineering. And many times, we look at what types of materials were used in the construction of the foundations and any of the steel that was used. So we went and looked at the foundations and the steel to look for asbestos and lead. We did not find asbestos. And we did find some minor, some lead paint that is below the federal limit for hazardous waste, but still something that we need to clean up accordingly in the railings and in some of the piping underneath of the bridge. So the first step of the construction would be to go in and do the lead paint removal in accordance with guidelines for that, and then dispose of that before we actually go in and do the work.
Okay. And then one last question is about the Potter Hotel Bridge. The only original part are the pipes that delineate the upper and lower parts of the railing?
There have been modifications to the bridge over the years. The pipe railings match the historic elements of the original railings and of the original depot construction. It's my understanding that in a number of storms, some of the railing was wiped out by debris and then replaced. But it was replaced in the historic nature and texture of the, of the old historic railings. And at some point during one of those storms, the mesh was added to it. So the pipe represents the historic look, but it has been, I believe, replaced a couple of times because of storm damage.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As a general question, I'm curious, as you go through this process and you wait for comments and then come back with a final, final study, and you ask for the CDP approval, does any more planning and expense go into that? Or is it, would we be looking at the same level of design as we are now?
We would be looking at the, the plans as they are today. We are going back to HLC with some details relating to the railings. The railings that are being proposed are a concrete kind of railing with a maximum of a four-inch opening. We're looking at some details on how to curve that because it typically requires a little bit more detail. So there'll be some railing details, but that's about it at this point.
Okay. And then, I don't want to stray into a comment, but I'd like to give you a question, an opportunity to address the comment before I make the comment. And that's just generally my feeling of the contradiction between the use in many of the areas in the study on what's on the ground right now, a bridge that's deficient, won't handle large traffic, won't handle a lot of traffic, and what you're proposing to put in place, which is a bridge that will handle much bigger vehicles, much noisier vehicles, and more traffic. But the, but the comparisons you cite in different areas of review, whether that's noise or level of traffic, is a comparison to what's on site today. And I'd like to hear how you, how you resolve that contradiction in the study.
Chair Justice, members of the Commission, I don't believe there's really a contradiction. The volumes of traffic on this bridge are extremely low already. We are not planning to accommodate huge amounts of, more of traffic. The, the project as proposed will accommodate any traffic that could occur to future, due to future development in the area, which is limited.
So the, you would call the phrase limited development in the area incorporating both the Children's Museum, the Bus Depot, and La Entraada. Those would all fall under the phrase of limited development in the future?
Correct.
Okay. And then I was interested in the slide that had the colored routes for buses and cars and how the traffic will pass back and forth and the change in the parking spaces, if that is truly a two-way street with slanted parking, or if some considerations are being made to make that all fit.
In today's configuration, it, Yananali is a two-way street with 90-degree parking. And what we're proposing is to maintain the two-lane street, sort of pushed to the, to the one side and angling the parking rather than having the 90-degree parking. So we're basically matching it with the change in the parking configuration.
But your, your stance would be that there's adequate space there for that, obviously?
That's correct.
And this would obviously revise the parking pattern of an inability of a person to come in off Chapala and park without going down to the end of the street and turning around, right?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You bet. If you could help me understand what the, what the real core objective of this project is? Is it to make the bridge safe? Is it a connectivity project that gets people, cars, bikes, or buses from point A to point B? You had a nice articulation of a whole series of goals, but boiled down to the essence, what's this project trying to accomplish?
The essence and the genesis of this project in 2007 was really the seismic analysis, or the seismic report that said the bridge is structurally deficient. It's hard to sort of see in this picture, but if you look closely, you can see it, that there are a series of cracks in the pavement. The bridge is constructed with the pony trusses on both sides with timber on the, on the pony trusses, and then a thin layer of asphalt over the top of that. And you can see from the, from the cracks that, you know, there's, there's a lot of cracks, which means the bridge is flexing. And, and so the genesis of this project, again, is to replace a bridge that's rated below standard capacity and structurally deficient according to Caltrans standards. That is the narrow definition that Caltrans uses. And then there is money available through this highway bridge program to go ahead and make the replacement, in this case, of the bridge so that it meets the, you know, standards for vehicular traffic. So that's where we started.
Okay.
And then the goals, you know, as we looked at, hey, we're going to replace a bridge, the goal said, hey, at the same time, there are some other objectives that we can, you know, include in the project that, you know, help us, you know, make the bridge smaller, you know, allow for better. As you can see here, there's, there's not really defined sidewalks.
Right.
And so we wanted to make sure that we provided for pedestrian flow and safe separation between the vehicles and the pedestrians. All of those things sort of get included as you start the project.
So this bridge will essentially cross the creek, connect with Yananali Street, but not provide through traffic up Chapala Street to Morocito Street?
That is correct. The, the northbound Chapala today is fenced off.
Yeah.
And then there is no crossing over the railroad tracks either. So there is, you know, as a result of the railroad tracks and freeway construction, there's this little bit of asphalt street, no man's land, north of this area. And so this will permanently sort of, you know, provide for traffic flow and get rid of this, this potential for a through street.
In, in general terms, what is the anticipated construction cost that the grant will be covering? And will the city have a match?
The, I have to look at the exact budget. I did not bring that with me.
Mr. General, orders of magnitude.
I think the overall project is in the neighborhood of $3 million. And the match is, in this case, because of the programs and some toll credits and all kinds of things, is almost 100% funded. So the construction and the right-of-way is 100% funded. There is a small city match for the design portion of the, of the, of the bridge itself. So our, our bridge program here in the city is really an opportunity to provide a little bit of city match, but, but gain tremendous cost efficiency in terms of replacing our aging infrastructure.
Okay. And just to date, have, in general terms, how much has the design and processing, the permit processing part of this cost? I mean, there's, anytime you get close to Mission Creek, you get into orders of magnitude of more complexity. And I'm just curious.
I believe the civil engineering and structural and foundation studies were about $300,000. We then had some of the environmental studies. I can provide you the information, if you'd like specifically, but I believe total, we've spent about $500,000 on all of our studies and, and engineering to date.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Berman, just a couple of questions on the process. Was there one thing that triggered this not being considered a categorical exemption? Because I look at lead paint and asbestos as issues, and I don't see hard, bright lines in terms of thresholds that require us to get into a negative declaration as opposed to a categorical exemption based on replacement of existing structure. I understand there's historical elements, but I'm just, what was the straw that put us over the edge on, on this level of environmental review?
Chair Justice, members of the Commission, there are several issues associated with this bridge that forced us to do an initial study. The first one, you mentioned the historical issues. The bridge is historically significant. Under current case law, anytime a historic, significant historic resource is about to be removed, you can't exempt the project. Second, and most importantly, we have tidewater goby habitat in the creek, just immediately south of the sill that Mr. Palmer showed us earlier. And the creek itself is steelhead habitat. And the creek itself is steelhead habitat. Steelhead migrate through the channel. So to cut, we have a lot of experience with constructing bridges in the creek, and we sort of have an idea of what we're headed for. And we knew that there would have to be an elaborate mitigation measure program to address construction in the creek during the migration season and water quality indirect impacts on the gobies in the lagoon. So that's the short answer.
That's good. Thank you. Okay, at this point in time, I'm going to open up the public comment portion of this meeting on this project. Are there any members of the audience who would like to address the planning commission? Seeing no one coming forward or in the audience, I'll close the public portion and bring it back to the Commission for discussion and action. Or, no, it's just discussion and comments on the environmental document. Yes, Ms. Jacobs.
Thank you, Chair Justice. We are simply making comments today. There's no action item. The project goals are excellent. The issue is primarily safety and daylighting the creek. And I appreciate that staff has also taken into consideration how the bridge could be improved for traffic and circulation, in particular, traffic and circulation for pedestrians and bicycles. As we've all noticed, there's not a lot of automobile traffic in this particular spot, so why not make it a better place for people who are walking or riding a bicycle, especially in this part of town near the beach and the train station? So my comments on the document are that I think you've identified well the most significant aspects. The demolition will certainly be the most unpleasant part of this project. And relating back to my original question about public notice and public engagement, keeping the neighbors involved in, especially the demolition part of it, I think will be very, much appreciated by that residential part of the neighborhood because it'll be ugly, it'll be smelly, it'll be messy, it'll be inconvenient. So let's just let them know when they need to go visit somebody else for a week and avoid that. It's always been a pretty invisible bridge. It's possible to walk or drive by this and not even think "bridge." And I think that this project is continuing with that. It hasn't gone overboard in its design, and I think that's a good idea. Having said that, I appreciate that it'll be going back to the HLC, and I would particularly appreciate if it had more attention to the landscaping because that will be something that can be improved in this area as something that creates shade or a particularly nice place for the pedestrians, for the bicycles to go without really impacting any other essential parts or goals of the project. So HLC, they do a great job on landscape, so use that capacity that they have. And thanks very much. Look forward to seeing it when it comes back.
Mr. Jordan, you want to continue?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I'll just reiterate my opinion on the, on my version of the lack of reconciliation between what's on the ground now and what you're proposing to put in. I keep hearing the phrase, "it's replacement in kind." I kept seeing the quote, "since it's replacing an existing bridge, then it's okay." But I see both in the noise sections and the traffic or circulation sections, a lack of response to an increased capacity for that bridge and what that will do when people find out that they can get through there much more easier, that larger vehicles can go through there, that adjacent developments potentially could have buses going down that street. And I think just as far as the environmental document goes, I think, I would love to see more discussion on that. Not a reflection of the counts that are on the street today, but what a count would be on the street in subsequent years after those projects were in. And if you still make the same determination, great. I just think, I don't think I'm right or wrong. I just think there's more discussion there. Also, as Commissioner Jacobs said, the construction part is the real bear, and I seem to have my share of them near my office, of pile driving, because we're right off Mission Creek. But I would like to, I have a hard time believing that the noise, the noise impact is less than significant when you're driving 60-foot piles into the creek sides, up and down that street. Again, I don't think I'm right or wrong. I just, it just says they're not significant. And that's the end of the discussion. Has some talk about noise levels, but I can tell you that four blocks away, when Haley and De Lavina, Haley and Bath was going on, our building is shaking and we can hear the noise all day long. So I just shudder to think what it is to the person across the street. And I don't understand how sound walls or sound blankets can actually mitigate that. And if that's just what we live with, that's what we live with, but I think we ought to be upfront about that. That would be my only two comments generally on the environmental part of it. I'm in generally complete agreement with Commissioner Jacobs on the outreach to the neighborhood. Personally, when you're coming back a month from now for the CDP, I'm generally not on board with the concept yet of the project. So I'll just give you that heads up. I'm happy to share that, that I was thankful to get that second report that talked about the alternatives. Those were the best ones I could see today because I couldn't read them in the report because the pictures are so small. But I would like to see some consideration being given to as small a width of bridge as possible. And if this is it, okay, but I would like to see that discussion had upfront rather than an alternative we're choosing. And I would like to be upfront with the neighborhood that if we're proposing a project that will increase traffic, that the neighborhood should know about that and have a chance to respond to it rather than just be noticing. I think this is a rather unique neighborhood of very old, very old homes, very quiet area. We've already talked about the lack of traffic, the invisibility of the bridge, and this has the potential to change the character of that particular end of the neighborhood. And I would like to see more happen than just a noticing as we go forward. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You bet. Ms. Lodge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think this will be much more noticeable as a bridge because of the curved railing that we saw the drawings for that will be coming across the street where now it just goes ahead and ends at the tracks. It does have a kind of invisible appearance, but I think as long as the neighborhood knows what to expect. And yes, I can hear the pile drivers up at my house, and I'm considerable distance away from it when the pile drivers are working down there. But it is temporary. So, but it does, having lived next to a construction project with this kind of thing going up right next door, it helps when the people in the neighborhood know what to expect and when to expect it. Otherwise, I don't have any additional comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bartlet.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In far, as far as the environmental impacts and mitigations that were in our report, I think they seem to be in line with the amount of construction that's being proposed to replace the bridge. So I don't have a huge concern with those, other than maybe some of the comments that my colleagues have brought up about keeping the neighborhood informed and dealing with, you know, notification and that sort of thing. It's much like doing the freeway construction. Unfortunately, it takes much longer because you have to keep the creek operational as well. So I think most of the mitigations really address the impacts to allow that to happen, so I'm comfortable with that aspect. I'm not as comfortable with the overall premise of the project, but that's not why we're here today. I mean, I think there's other bridges that are already washed out in town that would be far more deserving than this one, but I think that's beyond this scope. Also, it bothers me, the amount of money that is being spent on this. I calculated that if, you know, each traffic trip paid a dollar toll going across this, it would only take 65 years to pay off the original amount. That doesn't take into account any interest, so it seems like an exorbitant amount of money being spent for, you know, a bridge that is barely used. And I'm also concerned, I think, as it goes back to HLC, since we don't have pictures from the historic train depot, I'm concerned that the more solid-looking concrete bridge railing, 42 inches high, will probably block some of the ocean views from the train depot vantage point, given that this bridge is raised in elevation compared to the other streets. So I would certainly want to see some view studies to go to the HLC so they can, you know, really depict what the bridge looks like in place, some photo simulations. And also, I don't agree with expanding the scope of this project into changing all the parking adjacent to the railroad park. I think that that should stay 90 degrees so that it can be used from both directions for the neighborhood. And it doesn't seem fair to have Caltrans on a deck replacement redoing all the parking in the neighborhood. And I think there's a way you can align your traffic circulation diagram so that it doesn't have to take out that parking. And I would also look to try and align the crosswalks on either side of Yananali so they actually line up with each other, so we don't end up with diagonal crosswalks across the street. So those would be my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Bartlet. Ms. Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sometimes it's great to be second to the last because there's been such great stuff that came before, and I really appreciate it, especially Commissioner Bartlet's comments. Very nice, good job. I want to say what a great advantage it is that we have all this previous environmental review so we aren't spending redundantly for more and more and more. So I'm not unhappy with the environmental scrutiny that's taken place. I do appreciate the reduction of square footage in the deck of the bridge, but I do want it to be as small as possible because it is a petite neighborhood still. And I just don't want to see all those curbs lined up with tour buses. They are looking for places to park, and they idle while they park, and it's not a nice thing in a neighborhood. I really want to have the city get used to the idea of protecting the sandstone. And they have products, I know because I've specked them myself, that are wonderful on sandstone. They have a little gloss for a little while, and then it fades, and it's graffiti proof. Couldn't get Caltrans to do it, so now we have patchwork pink walls as we enter the city, and it's a crime. It is, graffiti is a crime, but so is sometimes its abatement. It's not much better. And it starts to look like a prison yard rather than an entry to a beautiful place. So I would urge you, and this would include the historic sandstone, to remove the existing graffiti and then treat it so it can't occur. And if there's a comment about toxicity or paint, I will be happy to have that conversation and tell you that graffiti paint is also toxic and nasty. So if it can be washed off with water, why would you paint? So I don't, I can go on for hours on that, but it's my pet peeve, one of them. So, and that would include the potter posts and finials because they need to be protected too, and we need to take the steps to stop this expensive run of crime in the city. I think the abatement of the lead and the asbestos and all that is definitely an environmental plus. The less, the better. And the arundo, you know, I have your ear right now, so I got to fill it. Arundo's awful. It's so invasive, and it will invade the beach, and it really alters the environments it attacks. And people say, oh, maybe it's holding the hill. It's splitting the sandstone. So I think it's very wise to be aggressive on arundo abatement and other invasive species in that creek. But there is a bunch of arundo there, and that's within two blocks of the beach. And I'd much rather take that battle right there than have it be occurring on the beach. It would be a preemptive strike in that case. So those are my comments. I will be watching this as it goes back to HLC, of course, and reporting back as I'm the liaison, so I'll be having my eye out. And thank you for jotting the note about the arundo and the graffiti proofing because I just think we can do so much better. And the fact that the city can do better than the state, let's just take advantage of that and do it. Somebody's got to set the standard. It better be us. Otherwise, there is no standard. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Larson. Ms. Schwartz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I think we have an opportunity, and you've demonstrated in this report that we're taking advantage of the opportunity. While we need to make some structural and seismic improvements to the area, there are many other opportunities for improvement. Many of my colleagues have mentioned them, but I'd like to point out just a few if I could. And as we look at traffic circulation, I think there's an opportunity to balance improving circulation but not over encouraging, as some of my colleagues have said, significantly more traffic. And as some of the potential projects come to us and come online, I do have a concern about incremental and cumulative impacts to this area. So I'm not sure what the best venue or forum is for considering those, but on a project-by-project basis, I'm not sure that we're looking at the cumulative impact that we can, with fair certainty, assume is going to come to this neighborhood. I'll just kind of note that for you because I think that needs to be on our radar. In terms of the noise and our quality impacts pertaining to construction, you mentioned that you anticipate a 14-month construction. And not knowing when some of these other nearby projects are coming online, I here again would see some kind of relational and mitigation considerations that should be taken so that the Children's Museum and some other projects don't all come up. At the same time this project is starting, I think it's going to be atrocious for this neighborhood if that's the case. I don't know that any set of mitigations is going to make it a decent, you know, livable situation for both the commercial and resident folks in the area. So just having that on our radar. In terms of water quality, and I've been reviewing some water quality studies in the city lately, I think this is a particularly important set of mitigations since it is very far downstream on the south end. So I'll be looking very closely at diligent monitoring and adherence to the mitigations there. In terms of the open area, broken asphalt section that is adjacent to or right near the historic Potter Bridge, in time, I'll be interested in looking at what design you might be proposing. I understand that's not part of this project. You mentioned that, I believe, at our site visit. But even though beautification, a beautification design might be forthcoming, we do know, and you mentioned this, it's a high-crime area under the bridge, adjacent to it, and I think we need to design with Parks and Rec and law enforcement, a configuration with appropriate lighting that does everything possible to deter crime because otherwise it's just going to be a different magnet for crime. We'll be sort of exchanging one problem for another in that area. And as we saw with the graffiti on the historic Potter Bridge and in the immediate area, I don't know, outside of what Commissioner Larson mentioned in terms of, you know, appropriate treatment of the physical area, I'm not sure what else we can do, but we need to do everything possible. Otherwise, I think we're going to be right back here at some other point in time trying to address that. And lastly, I think it's terrific. We'll be undergrounding these utilities. I think it'll significantly improve the visual aesthetics in the area. And then finally, I'm very pleased that the city will only have to contribute what sounds like a very small portion to the overall $3 million. And I think it's a great example of leveraging where we need something very important accomplished in our community. Most of the funding is coming from outside the city, but with some modest contributions, we're able to actually kind of enhance the overall project opportunity and leverage the money that we can sort of provide into the overall project so that the city is not burdened with the majority responsibility of the funding. So that's it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You bet. Oh, okay. I've got, my principal comment has to do with the air quality section of the ND, and I noticed on page 14 that staff used the Urbemis 9.2 computer run to establish operational emissions as well as, and I'm not sure whether they use that same model for construction missions or not, but I'm not understanding how a bridge is going to cause missions or not, but I'm not understanding how a bridge is going to cause 3.6 tons per year of NOx emissions or CO2 emissions. I understand we have to divulge this for a whole host of reasons, but I would suggest you go back into that Urbemis program, open it up, and look at the assumptions that you make as you go through and toggle the various assumptions in that model to see whether this is really a credible number, because I just, I don't know how a bridge is going to emit carbon dioxide. It just, it doesn't make sense to me. So it may be more accurate to say negligible as opposed to give a specific number to two significant digits on something like this. On the issue of noise, I concur with my other colleagues, and we're really between a rock and a hard spot in dealing with short-term construction impacts as being significant in terms of triggering the requirement of an EIR. And if we go there, we can't turn back. So I think we really have to be careful about what design considerations or design elements are put into the project to maximize the pile driver impacts to the maximum extent feasible, because like Mr. Jordan, I hear those all over town, even though they're a half mile to a mile away, you just can't, I mean, it's not significant a half mile away, but if you're working three or four blocks away, it's a big deal for the whole duration of construction. So if there's a lesson to be learned here, it would be to reflect in the update of our master environmental assessment or our environmental review procedures, some way to get a better mitigation handle on these short-term nuisance-related noise impacts, particularly where pile drivers are used. That really concludes the comments. I think the overall the ND is pleasantly more abbreviated than just about all the NDs I've seen, and I want to give credit where credit is due. I think it could shrink even a little bit more and rely or incorporate by reference all the hard work that's been done, as Ms. Larson has said, on the Lower Mission Creek piece. So that's, maybe the bell has been rung at this point, but that would be a particular suggestion in terms of a bigger view. I have to disagree with Mr. Bartlett on his suggestion of noise, not noise, but aesthetic simulations of views to the beach. This project has cost a considerable amount in processing costs, and the construction costs are very, the percentage of money going to processing and design costs is very, very, very significant compared to the actual project cost. It's probably three or four times more than a normal project, which may run between 1% and 3% in terms of the processing costs. And that brings me to this whole issue of the opportunistic nature of going after federal monies and using them as best we can. And I appreciate what Ms. Schwartz has said about, you know, getting the federal government to pay a large part of the bill for a very specific project, but I'm looking at the long-term net benefit of the actual reconstruction of this bridge, and if we've only got a couple hundred trips using it, it just seems to be subject to further scrutiny. And when it comes back to us, I'm going to be asking some of those hard questions, because I know you want to, you know, get a bridge redone, and it certainly deserves it, but it seems like this is a Christmas tree for adding things on to it. But that may be just its location and its physical importance as a historical piece of Santa Barbara. So those are my comments. Mr. Jordan?
Chair, this is a suggestion, perhaps. I heard a couple other commissioners echo some of both the traffic and the neighborhood concerns that I have. And I'm always frustrated, I guess, when it's a great project, and in particular when it's a city project, and the next opportunity you have is the finality of a coastal development permit, and you have to say yes or no. There's no gray area in between, and now you're balancing some of the things you were just talking about. You're getting a bucket full of money from the federal government. Maybe it's about to expire, so there's that pressure to approve it. And with the other comments that have been made, I would make the suggestion that perhaps before they're ready to bring it for CDP approval is that it would be appropriate either at a lunch meeting or an agenda item to have a concept review and talk in advance of some of these issues and air them. And in particular, I would even like to see the map expanded to take in considerations on the surrounding streets and the adjacent projected development that's going to take place, so the conversation for that neighborhood is taking place on a wider scope than just a simple project.
Good suggestion. Yes, Ms. Jacobson.
Would that discussion include something like smaller options? We were showed four options, alternatives in the environmental review. Is that what you're thinking?
Well, that would be one example. Like, if I have on my list, is the bridge as skinny as it could be? Is a skinnier bridge better? A response from Public Works might be, that doesn't qualify for the funding. And I would rather have that conversation before I'm being tasked to make a yes or no, all or nothing decision and get past that and consider it, along with a slew of other items I could come up with. So that'd certainly be something I'd be willing to talk about in advance of that final decision.
If we do have that type of a conversation, I would urge that we prioritize our comments so that we don't kill the project with 1,000 cuts and make this a more complicated project than it has already become. I mean, this is always a slippery slope when you get into the details in a sensitive area in a sensitive community. Yes.
We're talking amongst ourselves over here. The proposed project before you is essentially, through the design process and then through the DART process and all the departments providing input, represents the narrowest bridge possible, given the constraints of circulation element and circulation patterns and pedestrians. And, you know, we all met numerous times from public safety to transportation, Public Works, Creeks, Parks and Rec to come up with this proposed project. And we'd be happy to go through some of that with you if that's your wishes. I wanted to sort of back up and, you know, all of the comments that we've gotten today, we appreciate. They're all good comments, and I see some areas where we can expand, you know, our staff report accordingly to address, and I think we can, you know, give you that information. The one comment about, you know, the project and before you, you know, we can have that conversation now if you'd like, or if necessary to, you know, have a study session or is appropriate. I think, you know, that may be appropriate.
Mr. Busk, do you have a perspective as to whether to do that now or in a different context?
This was a notice hearing, and I think that there is some additional discussion that could take place. A lot of times, these MND hearings end up becoming much like a concept review hearing in the fact, and oftentimes, we notice it as both a concept review and an environmental hearing. So that's possible. I think the applicants probably have answers to a lot of those questions in terms of the alternatives, and so that might help you to hear that at this point, and possibly a concept review, a formal separate hearing won't be necessary.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Vincent.
Just to expand on Ms. DeBuss's comments, certainly the noticing of this hearing was for an environmental hearing, and so we've had our conversation about the environmental impact or the mitigated negative declaration draft. I think that certainly expanding the staff report when the project comes back for a vote on the coastal development permit would be appropriate. I heard some comments from the commission with questions regarding maybe even the prioritization of this project versus potentially other capital improvements within the city. That decision process is undertaken by Public Works every year with their capital improvement projects and their program with the city council. So I assume that there was a vetting of this project within a whole host of projects throughout the city, and so I think that there will be ample information to provide the commission with an understanding of where this project fits within the priorities of the city. And I think, so I would recommend that that information be in a staff report to give you a context for your coastal development permit decision.
I think that's a point well taken, Mr. Vincent. I think when Ms. Anderson was here, the last time we got a review of the Public Works budget, I posed a question about this very type of project. Where, how far do you go when you have an opportunistic grant that's out there that's going to require a much smaller percentage of city staff? Do you go for it, or do you just stick to the basics? And this is the kind of project that we were basically talking about at that point in time, but I think, I don't know that we're questioning this capital improvement project priorities here, but more looking for the best, most effective, efficient project that can resolve the problem at hand, which is the seismic safety of the bridge. Would the applicant like to provide a skosh more project context or specifics based upon the brief comments that you heard from us? Not that we have to, you know, go for an extensive discussion here, but just to help, let us leave this meeting with a better understanding so that when it comes back before us, we're able to be crisp and focused in our decision-making.
Chair Joseph and commissioners, that would be fine. We have, you know, obviously a lot of information. We have some slides if this issue did come up, so we can spend a few more moments and go through some of the size, configuration, selection process that was undertaken and how we got to where we are. And if there's additional questions and comments, and it leads to either a separate meeting or more information at the CDP hearing, we'll be happy to do that as well. So.
Can I pull up the yellow one?
That'd be great.
When we started the process back in 2007, there was somewhat of a wide and free-ranging conversation about what to do with the bridge itself. And, you know, alternative one represents what's out there today. Basically, if Shapala went through through the railroad tracks, it would provide two-way traffic and turning movements in all directions. The chain link fence that's blocking off the north end of Shapala Street, basically that's a dead end, but we still have two-way, wide-open turning movements through this intersection. In 2007, one of the conversations, we went all the way from the full bridge replacement all the way down to no bridge at all. There was a conversation about not replacing the bridge, but since it was structurally deficient, taking it out and not putting in a bridge at all. Because if there's a bridge there and somebody uses it and it's structurally deficient, it leaves us in a very tenuous position. So we looked at that option. Under the Highway Bridge Replacement Program, there are scenarios where the federal government and Caltrans pay for parts of a bridge removal. But what they pay for is just the bridge removal itself. They don't pay for any of the maybe reconfiguration scenario costs that are required. So if you sort of think in your mind about the neighborhood, if there was no, if the bridge was removed, we would essentially need a cul-de-sac just to the north or west on Yan'anoli because traffic would be coming up Kimberly, turning left on Yan'anoli, and would essentially hit a dead end at the depot park. So we went through a lot of analysis to try and figure out how we would configure and construct a cul-de-sac and whether or not a cul-de-sac and a dead end was appropriate given the overall circulation element of the city. Again, the neighborhood has very, very low traffic, and so, you know, some of the analysis we went through, you know, kind of had to take a unique sort of look at this neighborhood. So we looked at no bridge. We looked at the full bridge. We looked at one-way bridges, as you see in alternatives two, or sorry, three and four. And we kept coming back to the conversation about the project goals, which was a seismically safe bridge and providing for circulation in the neighborhood. And that conversation then also blended with, you know, some of the overall environmental goals of reducing bridge deck. The project that you see before you is essentially the combination of that entire process. From no bridge to the full bridge to one lane to two lane, there were about 12 different configurations we looked at and over 31 revisions. That represents the final version before you.
Go ahead and put the final version up.
So this final version that's before you is, of course, a two-lane bridge. We met interdepartmentally a number of times, and the same questions and conversations came up about the narrowest bridge possible. And in fact, this compromise that's before you is about four feet narrower than the original preferred alternative. We took a foot out of each sidewalk. Originally, we had six-foot sidewalks. These are five-foot. We also took two feet out of the deck width, sort of pushing the traffic, you know, as close together as possible but still maintaining the two-way safe alignment. One of the reasons we selected the bus-car sort of turning scenario was the bus template is very close in size to a fire truck and also a trash truck. They're slightly different, but we use the bus template, not to imply that the bus traffic gets the preferential sort of design alternative, but because it represents sort of that mid-size, both commercial, public safety and transportation vehicle, we use that bus template as sort of the standard. And we've provided the two-way traffic with the minimum separation as possible. The green lines and the purple lines that you saw on the slide with the turning motions, those are developed by, you know, AutoCAD and design software that calculates, you know, where the wheels are and where the overhang or mirrors, you know, occur on vehicles as they make turns. And so those outer lines are not the wheel lines. Those are sort of the envelope that the vehicle travels through as it moves around the corner. So we wanted to maintain that there is separation, that two vehicles could pass, and that, you know, we took out every little bit of gap and smooshed together the traffic and made the sidewalks as narrow as possible but still met ADA requirements. So that's how we ended up with this design, but we did look at, you know, no bridge and the full bridge and this configuration. We also kept one eye on the funding requirements of Caltrans and the federal highways. As I stated before, they will pay for related costs to bridge removal, but if we put in a cul-de-sac here, we would have to cover the costs of all of the right-of-way acquisition for that cul-de-sac because it won't fit within this street right-of-way. So the cul-de-sac either sort of is on part of the depot park, which is historic, or it's on the property where the hostel is. And so in either case, the city would be in the position of acquiring that right-of-way and then making the improvements at our cost to build that cul-de-sac. Again, it's a choice and it's a decision, but in the interdepartmental review, having the circulation element match very closely what is there today and not having additional impacts of a cul-de-sac on either the hostel or the park project seemed to outweigh, you know, not putting back in a bridge. So that's some of the thought process that's been going on for, you know, about four years as we move through this process with Caltrans and with all the departments at the city. The one question and comment that you've raised about, a number of you have raised, about sort of cumulative traffic and overall potential for development in the area and does the bridge, you know, add to that or not to that? What we tried to do in this configuration was come up with a bridge that matched the turning movements of the existing condition, recognizing that, you know, there are some vacant lots in the area. There are some projects that have been proposed and been forward to your commissioners in terms of review. They could be built, but whether, we didn't use those traffic numbers to widen the bridge or add any additional capacity. We wanted to provide for the turning movements as they existed or could exist today if a bus, a fire truck, a trash truck, you know, circumvented this neighborhood. bus, a fire truck, a trash truck, you know, circumvented this neighborhood, that they would all be able to safely pass. Again, the vehicle numbers are very, very low. They're well below, you know, the, the numbers represented by the size of these streets, but we still wanted to try and accommodate those fully.
One question comes to mind. For the non-HWA money that's required to implement this project, presuming we still have a redevelopment agency, can the design hard and soft costs that are not covered by the grant qualify for redevelopment tax increment funding? It is in the project area, the redevelopment agency.
I don't know the specifics of that. I would have to do some research and check into that, but, but to provide you with additional information on, on the costs.
It would be helpful to know that when we actually review the project for, for a decision.
Chair Justice, I am familiar with one discussion we had with the redevelopment agency regarding whether they would be willing to fund a pedestrian bridge because Caltrans wouldn't, which we thought they wouldn't.
Mm-hmm.
And they said, no, they wouldn't be able to.
Did they give a reason for it or did they just give us a?
I don't recall if they gave a reason.
One of the things that, that's included in the overall bridge program of the city, we have a number of bridges that, you know, Haley de Levine has been finished construction. Ortega is currently in construction. The next, we have Cota and Mason and Chapala and Cabrillo that are all in this, various forms of this final design engineering phase. And depending upon how some of the impacts and some of the technical issues are addressed, any one of the four of those may move ahead or behind the other, the other four. So we really will finish with Ortega and then the next one is one of those four. We've also applied for grants for a number of additional bridges. Those will be further out because we're just starting the, the process. When you look at the bridge funding, in some of the bridges, we have had to acquire right-of-way or, and/or property to construct those, those bridges. Once we construct the bridge and the remainder parcel that may occur as part of that construction, we'll go through a review with, with the city. And if it is deemed to be excess property and, and sold by the city for an appropriate use, the sales proceeds from that sale go back into the bridge program and can be used as match funds. So it, every piece of property is different. Some of them can be sold, some of them can't. Some are, are set aside for, by the city for maybe some environmental mitigation sites and, and revegetation. But if there is property that can be sold, that goes in, back into the program and used for match. In this case, the, the match rate on the engineering portion is 88.53%. So of the engineering dollars, we're spending about 11 and 1/2% as the match rate on the engineering side and the construction is 100% funded. So you can, you can see from a leveraging standpoint that the city's costs are minimized and there is this opportunity in the bridge program to use sort of some rolling funds forward, you know, from previous projects for, for right-of-way that can be used to offset this one. So that's the way the program's been set up, is to try and leverage the dollars and, and move forward in a sequence that allows the city to have a cash flow program that is as beneficial to us as we can while still achieving some of these, these safety improvements for the city. So I, I hope I've provided you a little bit of background on the configuration and the traffic. If I, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to address those.
Great. Mr. Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I opened the Pandora's Box, but I'm ill-equipped to really work with it because I honored the spirit of the environmental hearing, but I'll make an effort. I, I continue to be unsettled in, in the way you've reached your goals in that, for an example, not to say, again, to say I'm right or wrong, just for an example as a thought process, that Yananoli should be a two-way street and the size of the bridge then, the subsequent size of the bridge, of course, then has to be a certain width. And as we go forward, if that wants to be at the CDP agenda, okay, but if, it doesn't sound like we're going to do anything before that, but that's okay if that's where you want to put me on the spot. But I think it's connected to what's going on farther down the street. I think it's connected to the considerations that are being made on the Mason Street Bridge because those are connected to the size of the street and the use of the street. And I think all those are connected to the adjacent development in the area. You know, so my, my horrible question that I would ask at some time is that if the children's museum goes away and Mason Street Bridge never gets done, does this configuration still make the most sense and is it the most beneficial to both the neighborhood and the creek?
Commissioner Jordan, I, I meant to put another piece in my conversation and so I should have to help clarify that sort of question. Caltrans also has a requirement that the bridge is functionally appropriate for the streets that are the bridge approaches. So for instance, if you have a two-lane bridge or a two-lane street coming up to a bridge and the bridge is one lane, Caltrans would say, we're not going to allow you to build that federal, use federal dollars to build that one-lane bridge because essentially it's functionally obsolete the day you open it because you've got two-way traffic coming up to it. And so we had some conversations with Caltrans about the whole question of, of functionally obsolete bridge configurations at Chapala. And Yananoli's two-lane, Chapala's two-lane and West Yananoli's two-lane. And there was the conversation about could we build a one-way bridge and because of the low traffic volumes, that it would still function for the neighborhood? And the answer back from Caltrans was, we're not going to allow you to build a one-lane bridge when the approaches to that bridge are two-lane. And so prior to us submitting the final plans to Caltrans for a one-lane bridge, we would have to legislatively prove to them that the streets approaching that bridge were one-way. That would require us to go through a, a public hearing process with the city and the community and make Kimberly and Yananoli one-way and provide whatever legislative changes would be required in terms of an ordinance or a circulation element adjustment.
Ordinance amendment.
Ordinance amendment. To make Yananoli and Kimberly one-way, then we could submit to Caltrans and say, okay, now we want to build a one-way bridge. That's a possibility if, if that is the, the wish and the direction of, of the city and the neighborhood and so forth.
There are a lot more knowledgeable people chuckling at that down the way here, so.
And, and we had the conversation internally with staff and transportation and the whole Public Works Department and all the departments about what would be the right thing to do in moving forward. Given the unknowns of that process, this is the project that we ended up.
I understand that then, but then how do you, as we expand my scope of what I'm looking at, how do you reconcile the project at Mason then to a larger bridge and encroachment onto properties when I wouldn't call the approach to the Mason Bridge off of State Street a two-lane street?
Don't bring up that graphic.
Yes. Once again, this is a good question and there's, and there's some work behind it.
And I hate to do this because this is really what I wanted to talk about, a little more casual type of thing, because I think this whole, this whole area is connected in flow. And, you know, my basic tenet is that we're increasing the flow into this area. And as, as long as we want to do that and are above, and are above board with that and, and open with the community, that's great. But if we're kind of just doing them piecemeal and the end result is, as Commissioner Larson said, we've got tour buses lined up and parked on your curbs because now they have access to this off of State Street, I, I just don't, I'm not comfortable with that.
Brought up this exhibit and, and again, be happy to give you some overview and if there's follow-up that we need to do or however is deemed appropriate at the commission level, we'll be happy to do that. The two stars obviously show the Chapala Bridge to the left and the Mason Bridge to the, to the right. The Mason Bridge is part of the Lower Mission Creek project. Because the creek is widened to provide this additional conveyance capacity for the storm grain flows, the bridge has to be lengthened to get over the new wider creek. And the star location shows where that bridge is and the question is, what's the configuration of that bridge in relation to northbound Kimberly? The, the 2000 and 2006 EIR/EIS for Lower Mission Creek, the preferred alternative for that bridge configuration was to sort of sweep Kimberly to the east. The proposed alignment of the Mason Bridge and the Kimberly intersection matches and is using that EIR as the governing document for the configuration of both the bridge and, and Kimberly. There have been some discussions about, you know, now EIRs don't go into final engineering sort of level of detail. So as we go through this preliminary engineering and get some more mathematics for that bridge, you know, what is that numerical width in terms of northbound Kimberly as it sort of jogs to the, to the east a little bit? Our job in, in part of the HBRR program is to obviously be cost-effective in our designs and in our design approach for a project. And as part of that, we look at, you know, every way we can to minimize any impact to private property and any right-of-way acquisition that is required by the public project. That's our charge to, you know, expending money and to, to be before you and city council on, on, you know, are we encroaching unwisely on the private property and costing money? So as we look at the engineering design for Mason and Kimberly, we believe we have an approach that minimizes that impact onto private property and reduces it to the point where we feel we've got a very good design for that. And, and that take was already sort of accounted for in the 2000 EIR and EIS for Lower Mission Creek.
Hey, I understand what you're saying. So I guess my, my point is this, that right there is a natural pinch point going into this neighborhood right now that kind of effectively solves people cutting through the neighborhood and cutting and, and parking in the neighborhood. And that one's another one. But I know that the scope of these, as they happen, will just create a natural flow around that area. There will, there will be increased capacity and there'll be increased size capacity. And, and I just, again, I'm, I'm uncomfortable as you, as we move forward, the way, the way it reflects now both in the environmental document and just going to a CDP without talking more about that and the role of the neighborhood and the concerns that people would have in, in protecting that neighborhood. So, and I understand exactly your comments on why it will be that way. That makes, that makes total sense to me.
Chair Justice, members of the commission, I just wanted to straighten out a couple of issues. First of all, transportation is weighed in on the design of this, these two bridges and they would like access to the properties between State Street and Kimberly Avenue north of Mason Street to be taken off of Kimberly Avenue rather than off of State Street. Secondly, concurrently, the Mason Street is a two-lane road in both directions through the Kimberly Avenue intersection and Chapala Street is a two-lane road going north to Yananoli. Yananoli is a two-lane road going between Kimberly Avenue and Chapala Street. The two bridge replacement projects that are proposed are not increasing the capacity of the roadways. They may be tweaking turning movements to make turning movements safer, but they are not increasing the capacity. There will be two lanes before the project, there will be two lanes after the project.
Thank you.
I'm in a little disagreement saying Mason Street is a two-lane road coming off of State Street. It might be two lanes in that I can drive both ways, but I certainly can't have two cars going in opposite directions at the same time that there's a car parked 90 degrees there in the, in the parking spaces. It is physically impossible.
Okay.
So I, so I, just when we say two-lane, I understand that you're saying two-way traffic can go there, but one would be waiting for another at certain locations to get passed. I think I've probably exhausted both you and me.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Mr. Bartlet, do you have a burning question?
I sure do. I have a question for Mr. Palmer. On one of the 31 schemes that we didn't get to see, did you ever consider just extending Yananoli straight through on the south side of the youth hostel? Just do a land swap so that they get the land adjacent to the park, shorten the length of the roads, have a straight bridge? It's, it just seems like it would improve the neighborhood, but I know it involves land acquisition or land swapping. I just didn't know if that had ever been considered.
No, we didn't. And, you know, we, we wanted to always minimize right-of-way take and, and, and private building That, to do that might be maybe a, a cleaning up of a, of an old circulation system, you know, alignment. However, within the confines of the HBRR program and, and the federal highways funding, to maximize their dollars, they're, they're always looking at ancillary costs and trying to keep us just on bridges.
Well, that's why we're the planning commission, not the funding commission, so.
Thank you. I'd just like to thank you, Ms. Palmer, for really explaining with a considerable degree of clarity what is obviously a complicated project more than it is on its, on its face. So I'm sure we'll be able to have a, have a better conversation when you're back before us and the, we're prepared to certify the ND and go forward on, on whatever project we, we have to consider. So thank you very much for the detailed follow-up presentation. And with that, I think we're done.
Liaison reports?
Yes, yes. Our next item, our, the administrative agenda first is a staff hearing officer liaison report. And Ms. Larson would.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's very easy. There wasn't a meeting because there were no applications. And it looks like it's pretty barren for a bit, so, so there's no report for that. However, there's a nice juicy one for HLC. It was a very interesting meeting. The first thing that they did, that I was there for, was a correction of errata in Historic Resources Report for the Museum of Natural History. And all that meant was an inclusion, an inventory of the existing buildings and whether they're eligible structures, structures of merit, landmarks, et cetera. So that complete list is, is now up and, and interesting to read. The second, it was De La Guerra Plaza, and I was very excited because there were two former mayors there, so I had to behave. Mayor Lodge was there and Mayor Blum and so, and a number of other interesting people from town. And this was a fascinating look at De La Guerra Plaza, including the archaeological report, which they did a shovel test and they found that there were mission-era artifacts galore. So that, that will be a great environmental read for us. There was, they spoke, they talked about the curbs, the parking, the businesses that perhaps could daylight to the plaza, the, the trash, the permitted tent that covers the electrical box that's out in the plaza now. They talked about placement of the flag, movement of the flags, movement of the monument, the rock monument that's out facing De La Guerra Street. And, and the parking probably was one of the biggest discussions. And so parking on the, I don't want to get it wrong, I think it's the south curb, yes, of the plaza had, had been added. And so one of the HLC commissioners did open, I believe he's opening an enforcement case about that. So, since it wasn't permitted in the first place. So then another commissioner talked about cost, which I thought was interesting, and the cost to do the, I would say, on the surface, it looks like a modest change of De La Guerra, but with the, with the drainage plan for keeping the stormwater on-site and for the infrastructure all that would take and for the changes that are proposed, which would be removal of a curb, addition of bollards and some lighting, would be 2.2 million. So that was the figure that was used by the, by the consulting architects who have done many plans, it appears, for the, or more than, more than a few or a few for the. plans, it appears, or more than, more than a few, or a few for the plaza itself, but because of budget and other things, it keeps evolving, or downvolving, downsizing, devolving, and changing. So, and perhaps Ms. Lodge would like to add to that, if she can think of anything, she was there too in attendance, but that was, those were the highlights, and it was a very interesting and lively conversation about De La Guerra Plaza.
I have a question for Mr. Busk, as far as both our joint meeting with HLC, as far as the Natural History Museum. Now, they, HLC staff takes notes or minutes for that, for that meeting, joint meeting. How does, how do our comments get reflected in those notes, and is it simply a matter of courtesy to either provide those notes to us, or how do we interact with the notes, meeting minutes portion of a joint meeting such as that?
Chair Justice, I haven't reviewed those meeting minutes, but we can certainly forward them to you, and you can take a look at how that discussion was reflected.
Okay, if you could do that, we'd appreciate it. Ms. Lodge, did you have something to add?
Well, I think everyone has heard either on the radio, there was a long story on it on NPR this morning, and on the TV stations and so on last night, the first flights landed at the New Terminal last night, and the first people to deplane were given gifts, and there was a great deal of cheer and celebration. It was, started, the city started working on this project about 1985. Took a little while.
Yes. Okay, are there other committee and liaison reports? Anybody else? Okay, hearing no other comments, and having finished our business, we are adjourned. Thank you.